And so I'd ask you about that, is there something that can be done? And you said you were working on it to be able to get some investments, some clear information to the people where they have plenty of time to be able to digest it and sign up. And sure, you're putting the personal touch on us now they have a face they can call up at the district service center and ask about it. So I think this is really a huge step forward to be able to help people. And I think like you think, we do owe the employees some information, some help, some support in making these big decisions, and 15 minutes during the quick break is not enough. It's just confusing.
You know, we've had Edward Jones in the past come and do seminars, we've had AIG, now Valid do seminars, and we have had those individuals come in and try to inform and educate the employees. It's, you know, some people take advantage of it, majority of us don't unfortunately. Yes, sir.
I appreciate all that you guys are doing, and I know, I know, I understand the problem. And anyone who knows me knows that I'm quite frugal in saving myself and believing in that saving for retirement, saving for a variety of purposes. Education, you guys have, I think, have done a wonderful job, given the constraints and given the situation that you have, and that continues and I hope would continue. The trouble that I have with this is that we're not talking about the teacher new hire who we're trying to educate as to where they're going to be 20 or 30 years from now. What concerns me is the custodial staff member who is making 15,000 dollars a year, and 3% to them is really dinner that week. It's going to be their meals that week. Not always are our staff able to be as meticulous when they go through that process of enrollments, even on the annual basis, that we always would like them to be. And there's a variety of reasons why, sometimes they need help, sometimes they just have other things going on. So my concern is, is that we're making personal decisions for them, and I'm not comfortable with that. And I, and I think that there's been a lot of things you've described to try and mitigate that process. I don't like the idea of us telling them by default, to some extent, you need to do this, and this is why. I agree with the education of that, I agree with trying to convince them of that. I don't agree with giving them a opt-out option of that. I'm not a big fan of opt-out options. I know that you've tried to go through, I think, a lot of, almost not making it an opt-out. This just one board member is just not comfortable with that, that does not mean it's not going to pass. I'm just saying for myself, if it does, if the board does choose to bring this back for a vote, I'm going to have trouble supporting it.
I initially had the same thoughts. It took me about a year to kind of think about it, digest it, come around, because I initially had the same thing. I don't want to put us in a position where we tell employees what to do with their money. But the more and more I see employees need help in this venture to help save for retirement. But it did take me about a year to come around.
I'm not going to tell somebody though, or take away the fact that they may need something for their child, their family, their food that week, and they don't realize that that happened until two weeks down the road. Many of our families, particularly in the support staff, they are living week to week. And so this opting out is going to have an impact on them. I can tell you, I believe what we will get phone calls on is them saying, I had no idea you guys were just going to make that decision for us when I chose that. And every disclosure we put in there is still for a percentage of our people will be the fact that they will come to us afterwards, and granted, they can give the money back, I understand that. But in the meantime, they just went a week without money. And that is a problem again with particularly our support staff is who that concerns me. So.
I don't disagree. I mean, there's a lot of things to think about in this, and hence why we're presenting you the information in a workshop. There's pros and cons, there's no doubt about it.
You can solve that.
I've had to think, I've thought about that for a long time.
You can give them a net salary sheet. Once you go through, whether it's new hire or someone that's out there contemplating moving into this direction, it's easy to give them a printout showing a net to them if they are budgeting weekly, right? So that they can sign off with full disclosure of what their weekly paycheck's going to look like. And the reason why I am speaking up just from, as I'm touching students throughout, it's just so critical. The first paycheck is the first check that you start your savings is the message that needs to be sent to our students. So when you make any kind of income, pay yourself first. I just constantly have that drumbeat, pay yourself first. And I think if we're trying to give that, modeling that and sharing that advice to our students, that it's definitely pertinent to do it with our staff as well. But I certainly don't want to mislead any staff member by having something that's not totally transparent. So to me, it'd be pretty easy to say, and this is what your net will be every week.
That's a good point, be part of the education process.
Yes.
And then just again, just a reminder, it's not just an opt-out, they have to say, yes, I want to do this.
But they can't go to the next screen, so you're going to hit one of the buttons that's going to get you through.
And then the button can be no, I don't want it. So, yes, you're correct.
So I think we, one of the things, and Mr. Todd, I can give you another opportunity, but I think the board needs to give direction about whether we're going to put it on the side of our agenda, is what we need to do. So did, Mr. Todd, do you have something before we go?
My biggest issue, I think, with this is that if we've educated our employees to the point that they choose not to save for retirement, it's hard for me to come in and say, wait, we're smarter than you are, we want, this is going to be a requirement. And that's an issue that I have with us doing a auto-enroll type program. Now, I'm trying to get my hands around the screen, I'm trying to think as a new employee coming in and from being an HR director in a previous career, you know, I kind of know what we're dealing with, with employees and this hurried up issue that they go through when they go through their benefit meetings and all those things. But if they say no, on this screen comes up, do you want to participate, they say no, then they basically opted out, and they just, they just keep on going. If they say yes, then they have choices to make. If, I mean, with these other companies as well, not just with traditional.
They don't make the choice right then, but yes, they would make potentially have choices for the future.
So they would say yes, but they don't make the choices then on the?
Right, the idea is that they would say, yes, I want to participate, but I really don't, let it go to default because I need to have time to do my own due diligence to decide which of the vendors and providers, funds, annuities, et cetera, that I want to go in. So it would go in that default.
So they say yes, and do they get to choose what percent they put in, or will it make it be 3% on the default?
They're recommending 3, but that's decisions that we can make. Here, we bring, if, if we bring it to you, if you choose to ask it, we can say 1, 2, 3, or whatever you want to make.
So the default is yes, that, or they choose yes, and then it goes to the default account that we would have the amount set up, 1, 2, 3%, whatever we want to, that we would make that decision for them until they come back and make another financial decision? Is that kind of the way it works?
Yeah, that's correct, but you can also, depending on your software provider, and
Don Crook, who helps y'all with your 125 administration and your enrollment, in their software, he says that you can put the 3, but if they want to make it 5, if they want to make it whatever, you can actually do that in the system. We recommend that it be 3 across the board for ease of administration. But if you want to give the added choices to where they could have 5, they could go down to 2, they could do 3, if you look at people's salary, you have to have something in dollars that are meaningful. If you go down to 1%, that's really not a meaningful amount to be saving, it's almost like saving zero. So that's why 3 is kind of a national average. But yes, there are ways to, well, first off, education is the big key, okay? I like the idea of the sample paycheck. For 35 years, I've used sample paychecks with people, and it's very effective. People then visualize it, they see it, and they know what they're going to be getting. But they still have the ability, once they actually get it, to say, wait a minute, you know? And you make it easy for them. They can either log on, or they can make a phone call. And because we have the information as your administrator, we give them a toll-free number, they can call, we give them verification, you know, we make sure it's them. And then we make sure that if they opt out, that it's done immediately and that they get their refund very quickly. But again, that's the reason to have that opt-out, is not just to have, and it's really to make it easy. And remember early or midway through the presentation, I gave you the four steps somebody has to take in order to actually enroll? It takes work to go find somebody, to enroll, to then get the salary reduction agreement down to the, to the district. So one of the, fully half of the reason why many people don't do it is because they never get around to it and they don't go through the steps and the process. All this does is give them an easy way to start saving, or say, no, I'll wait.
But if they check yes, and they still don't go and do all this checking on what investments to put their money in, it's just going to be in the guaranteed, it's just going to sit there?
That is correct, it would just, but they will continually get statements that will promote the other six providers, as well as getting them to be a little more educated. And, you know, we might think of the custodial staff or others as well, and then, many times in our industry, you'll see the four, or five, or 10 custodians that are out there that really, they pinch their pennies, they save, they do pay themselves first, they do that. But again, it's a cumbersome process to be able to enroll. That's why in 401K, the automatic enrollment has done so well, is because it wasn't a cumbersome process. Even if it just goes in and they only get 1.65%, at least they're saving the taxes, it is growing, it is combining, it is going somewhere. So, but, the key, and one of the reasons that, again, the providers like it as well, is because we're involved. Because, again, we don't care where the money goes from the standpoint, we don't have to keep it in that account for us to make, for us to do our job, okay? It can go anywhere, we're going to do the same job. Well, the thing is, is then you get people that are already saving, and when a, and when a representative says, you know, are you saving? Yes, I am. I'm in the default account. Okay, well, here's where I can help you, you need to be doing more than that, let's evaluate, do you need things for college, do you need other things? That's when they get engaged. But if they never start, it's hard to get engaged.
And I would just say again, though, I understand what you're saying, I understand what's happened in the educational, but we have a percentage of our people that are still not going to choose that. I don't like our mandatory healthcare that we have forced upon now this entire country, let alone what we're having to do. This is really a mandatory type system. We're making them opt out of it. I'm just not supportive, and I'm having, I understand you've gone to great lengths to it, but to me, I have trouble supporting it. So, board members, we just need to have consensus if we're going to bring this forward, I think, is the next thing at this point. No, no, we just need to, we just need to, you know, say, I'm not supportive of it, but you know, that's fine. Okay. I think we have at least the majority that does that, so we'll get placed on the next agenda.
All right. And thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Dixon, we have policy review. Mr. Bradshaw is going to stay with us through policy review, and then before he goes, if we have anything else we need to ask of him, he's going to step out, and then if there's something we did need, he's said he's willing to come back and work with us.
Good morning, everyone. I do have one additional item. We have five policies to review today, and then one additional item. I'm going to ask you for a consensus on ranking some sidewalk projects for the NPO. First item under policy review is policy 4.14, adult education. This policy was revised to ensure that the fee and refund procedures are clear and incorporated into the policy. Basically, this is what we've been doing anyway, but I understand that, you know, students did not necessarily know that they needed to withdraw from classes, they just didn't show up, and therefore, they were, they created a problem. So Mr. Tyler is here to, if you have any questions regarding the operational aspects of this, but the only change is that sentence in section 7, which says, fee and refund procedures for adult education and career and technical education programs shall be specified in the guidelines. A copy of the guidelines is provided for you, even though you don't need to approve the guidelines. And the citation has been added, which is workforce education post-secondary student fees. Anybody have any questions?
What was the problem again, that led to this?
It's my understanding there really wasn't a problem. Our accrediting agency, COE, requires that our fee and refund policy be approved by the board and guidelines, and this was just a resubstantiated.
Board members, is there any more questions or direction, or can we just go ahead and have this put onto our agenda?
Please, I'm interested in the comments.
Thank you. The next item is policies 4.61, security of tests. This is, policy was revised to include security measures of local assessments as adopted in the provisions of Florida statute 1008.22. And basically, this language adds local assessments to the test that must be secure. And the citation that was also added is confidentially assessment instruments. Anybody have any?
Give us one second.
Okay.
Chuck, was this again, was this part of bringing forward from our, from EMC?
Yes.
And Mr. Todd, are you familiar with EMC yet? And that's okay if you're not, because I think it took me a couple of years. So, Mr. Dixon, would you just explain what they are, and so, because it's, and it's good for the public to understand as well?
Yes. EMCS is our policy consultant, basically service most of the districts in Florida, and they monitor the legislative changes and bring forth recommended changes for policy twice a year. And this particular one just adds the local assessments to the lists of state board of education administered and national achievement tests. So they all have to be secure.
I know full well, they need it to be secure, because I remember the situation where one was put aside, and I tell you, if you had stolen the gold from the four knocks, they take it very seriously, and it's a good thing to do, because your test doesn't get out.
This is good, to bring it forward.
Would make sense to treat them all equally.
Thanks, sir.
And then the third item is policy 6.61, this is your HIV/AIDS or other communicable diseases, bloodborne pathogens and environmental hazards. This just does not change anything in the policy, it just deletes a citation that was repealed.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon, is there anything else?
Yes, I have a couple more, and then the sidewalk ranking. The next one is a request to review and revise policy 7.35, investment of funds. This revises some of the numbering. There was also, when we went through this, we noticed that there were two section Ks, so that's also been changed. And Mr. Blocker here is here to answer any questions you might have about the changes in the policy itself.
I just wanted to ask about the portfolio composition. We were going from a maximum of 25% to a 75% of available funds may be invested in bond funds.
Yeah, just to give us more options out there. You're looking at, which one are you looking at, Ms. Powers?
I'm looking at page 13 of 16, under K, short-term bond funds.
Yeah, that was the correction.
Okay.
Which I'm looking at.
A maximum of 25%.
That was, I thought that was, that was the correction that should have been made.
Yes.
Okay.
That should not be changed, that 25% should remain the same. The change should be down in K, I don't know, I thought that we got the?
On E.
The K.
Yeah, no, I was going to say page nine of the?
Yeah, I'm looking at page 13.
13, 16, you're correct, because that was the change I identified, the T, I thought it was made for y'all.
Okay.
The composition for short-term funds should not be changed at all, it should remain at 25%.
At 25%.
You go down below where it says the second K intergovernmental fund, that's the one that Chuck says should be renumbered to L, relettered to L, and that is the one that we want to change from 25% to 75%. We use intergovernmental funds. We have several of them out there available, and we're going to be start using them more and more, so you want to be able to have availability to put more of your money out there. Because the funds right now are making significantly better, there's more options that are currently available, so I wanted to increase that to 75% from the 25%. So the short-term bonds, that does not change, it stays at 25%. The intergovernmental funds is relettered to L, and it changes from 25 to 75.
And then with sparing time deposits and savings, it goes from 25 to 1?
Correct, because those are CDs, those are qualified deposits, we did want to have those options. And if we wanted to put all the money in CDs, we were able to, I would probably not do that, but I want to have that option.
It gives you flexibility moving the money.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, thanks for the clarification.
Any other questions?
No.
So just make sure that there's a reletter and those corrections. Thank you.
The final policy revision is policy 8.43, competitive sales regulations. This is a significant overhaul, which is intended to allow for, you know, food service to place items in the vending machine. Mr. Pistone is here to give you information about this, and we do also have another revision that's being proposed that would opt out WTC, so that it would not apply to, with the technical college. I'll pass that out.
Yes, Mr. Pistone, why just during the school day, why not during, like, you're having a club meeting or something after school?
No, it allows for that too, basically allowing for vending machines to be on at both the middle and the high school. As, it used to be, you were not allowed to serve anything out of there and compete against food services until an hour after the last lunch period. What this allows now is for these vending machines to be on at the middle and the high school, providing they meet these healthy snack guidelines, okay? So what that allows is these machines to be on throughout the school day, the students can go in, partake of anything out of the vending machines, the proceeds are then split between food services and the schools, okay?
Mr. Pistone, I have a serious question. Did that need healthy food?
Yes, it did.
Wow! Sorry, that was just really good.
Sorry, it was a little late getting to?
No, no, it was so good. This certainly is a lot better situation than we've had, though, with the competitive before, we pretty much had to not have that option, and it had economic impacts, you know, to some programs, so.
They're trying to generate funds, and if we do a 50-50 split, again, we said we would take a look and see, did it really affect our, what we call our à la carte sales? And as of right now, we seem to be okay. We're piling it at a couple of the high schools, we really have not gone the middle school route yet, so we'll see how it goes. We can come back to you and report at a later date on where we're at with that. And then, as Mr. Dixon had mentioned, carbonated beverages, the board has been very adamant, no carbonated beverages during the school day. That's not to say we do not have carbonated beverage machines on high school campuses, because we do. But they are on timers, and they're not allowed to buy from that until basically after the school day. This would allow at least WTC, and we checked to make sure we follow regulations, because they do have high school students over there now, okay? There was such a minute amount of high schools, high school students over there, that percentage was small enough for us to allow carbonated beverages, should the board approve that, to be sold over there at WTC, because you've got different hours, you have adults taking classes, and if we start regulating carbonated beverages for them, it might be a little, little difficult.
And the foods have contents on them of what?
We are working on that, we're very close to having it all on our website, I know Ms. Powers had asked about that, to where any of the items that are in there that this company puts in, now, we do not stock the machines, that's run by a separate company, okay? But he has given us a listing of those items that must meet these healthy snack guidelines, and we have placed those items on our website so students could actually go on there and see what's coming out of that machine, and that they meet certain guidelines, whether it's a carb count, or a calorie count, or whatever the case may be.
That is so good, and we're so far ahead because of you, all the work that you've done, so many school systems, and as I've said many times, Mr. Pistone's a hero to my two granddaughters, because they're very into checking carb counts and sugars and all that kind of stuff, and their school doesn't do it as like we do, so they want to transfer it down here too, so Mr. Pistone can help them.
And certainly our health needs, whether it's our dietary needs, or, you know, diabetes, it's provided. What's the name of that software too, or the?
Nutrislice.
Thank you. I knew it was something slice, I just remembered the orange.
Yeah. We're looking in the future to try and purchase some video monitors or TVs to allow these nutrition facts to be placed when the kids enter the serving area, so we're looking to see that. So if you see somebody's popping up, we're going to start slow, because again, we want it to be a big enough monitor, not a little one where they can see, but I don't want you to think we're just out buying televisions for no reason. There is a nutrition content that will be showing up, pictures of the food and all of that, so it's almost like having your own computer in front of you that'll teach the students a little bit more. But we want to be able to make it to where it's beneficial for the school too, so they could show some information that's out there, whether it's a football game coming up, or, you know, something going on at the schools. So we want to be able to work as a team with that and be able to show messages, because whether we like it or not, that's the age we're in, it's the digital age for everything, so.
But that's very helpful to have it on the TV screen, what's going to be served and what's in it.
Correct, correct. So we're pricing out, see if we can get as good a deals as we can on certain smart TVs, and be able to make sure the software that we have will show this information to our students.
If there's any way you can combine and include the health curriculum as part of that, so that they have, see the connection between what they're being taught as far as healthy eating habits and establishing those habits, and how they can monitor their own with the tools that are provided, and maybe there's some sort of a connection that can be made, so that the health department, the health teacher can actually track and see that the kids are utilizing the technology that we're going to be spending some serious dollars.
That's something we can have some conversations.
Or they get those habits.
Yeah, with the schools with, okay?
Mr. Pistone and Dr. Gettis too, I thought at one time we talked about maybe putting the Nutrislice either app or icon on our one-to-ones, so that it was part of the standard deployment. That would certainly be something that would be right there.
Not forget, he's been wonderful, he knows what we're looking for.
And they do, it just was something that reminded me, because that's kind of one of those things that would be right there, and it doesn't cost us anything to just do that, so.
That's a great idea, for the future, for those children who are going to be adults.
Yes, ma'am.
This is a lifelong education.
Absolutely, it is.
They're going to do this.
It is.
Thank you very much. Is there anything more direction you need?
Health.
Oh, sorry, sir, I'm sorry, Mr. Todd.
So a healthy school team is a new requirement?
I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Todd, because that will be something we're going to need to implement, and we'll get with the schools on that, because we're going to need representation, because in order for this to have gone through at the state level, they expect us to put together a healthy school team. Now, I don't believe in just creating committee after committee after committee, our schools are so busy, okay? We do have a SHAC committee, okay? We do have our own wellness committee that we've kind of combined, so we will try and pull from those individuals and see if we do not have to create another committee with which to have and make this work.
They're not going to, every school doesn't have a healthy school team, will be a healthy school team for the district?
I am looking at it district-wide, but I need clarification from the state on whether they will expect, if they have vending machines per site, you will have to have a healthy school team. My thinking will be, and I will address that to the state, as long as you have a couple representatives from that site on our healthy school team, you wouldn't necessarily need to create your whole team at that site. Believe me, I will make sure we're in compliance with everything.
And I was going to say that.
You all know me well enough by now, we?
And Ms. Powers has represented us. And Ms. Powers has represented us with your committees on those things, so I'm sure she'll be anxiously waiting for her opportunity.
Kelly Niblott does a great job for us, that's our dietitian. She attends the SHAC meetings and keeps everybody up to snuff on where we're at with allergies and nutrition or anything, so we're lucky to have somebody like Kelly on our team there.
Well, thanks for going to all of the SAT committees and sharing the Nutrislice program. I really appreciate it.
We enjoy doing that and educating. Anytime they invite us, we'll come out, we'll feed them, which that's always a hit, okay? When you feed them and tell them what we're feeding them, and it's definitely helped educate a lot of our community members, our parents, teachers and so forth, so...
Thank you for the sales and for the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Take care.
So that one?
Mm-hmm.
And then the final item that I have is an additional item, and I'll just pass this out. I've got a colored version, I know Ms. Vergarami had a black and white version. This one's a little easier to tell.
Ms. Vergarami's passed Mr. Blocker's require minimum requirements or maximum requirements, so just don't give your copy to Mr. Blocker.
Okay, basically, let me give you a little bit of history of this. We typically, in the past, we haven't brought forward sidewalk projects that are county projects or city projects to the board, because they're not school board funded projects. We have, in 2008, we did a, in 2006, I think we did our first Safe Routes to School application, and we had to partner with Citrus County, and that's how we got the Citrus Springs Middle School and Central Ridge Elementary sidewalk. It's about a half million dollar project, and that was our first Safe Routes to School project. The following year, we applied for another one, which I thought had a better chance of even being chosen, and that was Forest Ridge Elementary. It met all the criteria, and in District 7, which includes Tampa Bay, we were ranked number three, but we didn't have enough funding that year, so we didn't get that project built. And then when we came back to put it back on the list, they had changed the requirements. We had to survey parents and do a lot more extensive work to file the application, so we basically lost the ability to get a Safe Routes to School funding for that project. Then the Citrus County, Citrus County became part of the Metropolitan Planning Organization. So we now are combined with Hernando County, and the way the sidewalk projects and bicycle projects are ranked is through a committee process. And they have a Bicycle Pedestrian Access Committee, they have a Technical Advisory Committee, they have a Citizens Advisory Committee, and then they have the MPO itself. So the project, which the county has worked with me on, was really ranked number one, because it is one that we have recognized through the board and worked with the county on. It was the one that impacts the most students per square mile, because Central, I'm sorry, Forest Ridge Elementary is our most densely populated school in terms of the neighborhood around it. And if you look at that map, you can see the number of homes in close proximity to Forest Ridge Elementary on the first page there after the cover. And this project, we were asked to rank projects by the MPO, and I think the MPO is here to make a brief presentation to you today, Mr. Guedes, with the Metropolitan Planning Organization, after I give you the overview. So it would be the Long Range Planning Committee and the staff's recommendation to rank Forest Ridge Elementary first. The second project was Pleasant Grove Elementary, and that was actually recommended by the school, because they had noticed a large number, or a significant number of people, well, parents walking their children to school from the neighborhood around Pleasant Grove Elementary. That's a project that just came up this past year, but it only impacts about 50 students in that neighborhood. And then the final project was one that actually came up through the MPO, it wasn't through the school system, where it sidewalked all the way along Rock Crusher from 44 to Homo Sassa Trail, which is a huge project, but it would not impact a large number of students because of the density in that area, it's a very rural area, so you don't...
It's a very long distance.
Very long distance, so it's going to be an expensive project. And in reality, the projects are usually ranked by how many people they impact and the costs, the cost-benefit analysis. And if you look at the size of this project, it's not likely to be moved up higher in the ranking because of the cost and the number of people that will benefit from it. Whereas Forest Ridge Elementary, it's a relatively short distance, and it impacts a lot of people. And if you've been out there lately, you'll see that there's an adult condo, a project of some sort, being built right next to the school, between the school and the Citrus Hills Shopping Center.
And my husband wondered, are you expanding the school?
No, it's adult apartments. And that's all I know about it, but they're not putting in sidewalks.
Potential volunteers is what I'm hoping.
Yeah. They can walk into the school if you put in a sidewalk, but we're not asking you to rank these projects, we're just asking you to acknowledge that your Long Range Planning Committee has ranked these projects, and just if you have any significant concerns, I could always bring them back to you for a formal agenda item.
I want to congratulate you for bringing Mr. Murray back on that.
Yes.
That's great to see him, he's got a great amount of institutional knowledge and understanding, and so he's, he'll be helpful into the discussions.
And I do want to thank Mr. Eastman with the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners for doing a lot of work on the Pleasant Grove project, because he basically went out and surveyed that whole thing, determined how many linear feet of sidewalk need to be built, and how much it was going to cost and everything. So all of these projects are going to go on the priority list, but we just want to make sure that the Forest Ridge project gets, you know, moved to the top of, because it is most likely to be built and the one that would impact the most students.
Chuck, the one thing I would just say, and it may be for Mr. Guedes, that we might want to just share with him, is that, while I would agree with the Long Range Committee's views on its ranking and prioritizing maybe is a better way of putting it, this board has also stated that we would be very supportive if, in the future, that we look at doing a type of bike path down Homo Sassa Trail there with Sugar Mill Woods, where we had unfortunately a young man who was injured. And I know that's a much bigger project than this, but we certainly are, I think, very encouraging that that just kind of stays on your radar.
It's definitely, it's on current rank.
Was I saying it's a number two, or number one, or?
It's ranked number one.
Oh, wow, okay.
I'll turn it over to Mr. Guedes and let him give you kind of a...
Welcome to Citrus County School Board, Mr. Guedes.
Thank you, thank you. Good morning, folks. I'm Steve Guedes for the Hernando-Citrus MPO. The Hernando-Citrus MPO is actually almost a year old now. We formed last year, and with that comes more process, unfortunately. As Chuck mentioned earlier, Safe Routes to School funding evaporated several years ago with new federal legislation. It's now under what they call MAP 21. It lumps a bunch of projects into a transportation alternative funding. That's our only source of funding for these types of projects. I don't know about y'all, but Hernando County is not exactly flush with cash these days, so we rely on this funding to get sidewalks built, to get trails built, to get any of these 12 eligible projects funded. So the one thing that's been pounding into our heads over the years by FDOT is to keep projects on the list, our TA list. Once it gets on the list, it will get done, it's just a question of when. As soon as the funding becomes available, it'll get built. We have school sidewalk projects in Hernando that have been on the list for three, four, or five years now. We have a crop, a new crop, that's going to build three sidewalks within the next few years. As Chuck mentioned earlier, also, they're not cheap. These are three, four, half million dollar projects, just to build sidewalks, and say, my God, how does it cost that much? But it does, that's just the reality. So getting the projects on the list, and that's why Chuck presented this to you here today, to see your concurrence, that these projects are valid. We do take them to all our committees, the BPAC looked at this last week, we go to our TAC and CAC next week, then we ultimately bring it to the MPO for their review and approval.
I just ask, when it comes to sidewalks versus bike paths, with the young man that he refers to died because he was bicycling, on a sidewalk, are bicycles allowed?
They are allowed unless you have a local ordinance that prevents it.
Okay.
He was actually on the shoulder, if I'm not mistaken, on 19.
He was on 19.
Right.
And looking at a question I was asked just the other day by a resident, there are sidewalks that seem to go to nowhere, that are in areas where there are really no residents, like along 44 between 491 and Walmart, that strip there, there's just a very long, expensive bike path, and I had no answer. Why is there a bike path there, not a bike path, but a sidewalk there, and not in the more heavily residential areas that need to get to the library? And I just didn't have the answer.
You'll have to excuse me, because I'm still on the learning curve about this geography, but typically those are segments that the business is required to build. I know in Hernando, we require residential and commercial to build a segment of sidewalk that fronts the road in front of their business, and that may be what that is, that Walmart built it when they got them.
And I believe too, when we've had road expansions, there's certain new requirements that mandate that they have to have that, so that's why all of a sudden it makes no sense, but it's because they expanded the road. I'm sorry, Mr. Todd.
So there's no projected cost on these items, so do you have any projected costs? Or I know you said that's a part of it, but...
We do, we didn't want to burden you with the dollar shock.
Well, I'm just...
Dollar shock on these projects, but...
They have EMS here.
It's roughly?
I've got the price I can get to.
Well, I know Chuck said that the third project, Rock Crusher, the extent of it is so large that...
You have no idea?
I think that there really is projects like 289,000, something in that range.
Okay. And the Pleasant Grove?
Smallest one.
Is it, oh, it's smaller than Pleasant Grove?
Pleasant Grove's more, and then the Rock Crusher's a lot more.
But Forest Ridge is?
Forest Ridge is the lower one.
It's the lower one, okay.
Because there's two segments to Forest Ridge, and we're really only concerned with the first segment.
Okay.
Which impacts the school and the library and the skateboard park and the new building that's going up.
Okay.
The other segment goes from Beverly, Lake Beverly, all the way down to 491, and it wouldn't impact as many students, so that's not the one that we're concerned with.
Okay.
And Ms. Powers?
I'm glad you picked out the Pleasant Grove Elementary, because I live down that way, and I've noticed more and more children and parents walking on the side of the road, and it concerned me, because the parents, apparently on the inside, the children on the outside, they break loose, they can go right straight into the road, and it's all sands very, so you're walking all over the place, you're not walking in a pack, so...
That would definitely be number two.
Oh, it did concern us. And of course, we all know that Forest Ridge is always been a concern. So thanks very much.
Is there any other questions or info we need to provide right now? We appreciate it, and we appreciate you staying in contact with Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, will do. Appreciate it.
Thank you. That's the policy review.
This is going to be Ms. Vergarami calling here.
Board members, we are going to budget. Did anyone want to take a five-minute break before we start budget?
Yes.
Please.
Okay. You know, we're going to then reconvene here at 10:30. Sorry, Ms. Blocker.